I'd like to call this meeting of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to order Pursuit to Government Code, Section, oh wait, excuse me. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on an item appearing on the agenda, please fill out speaker card noting the member, uh, number of the agenda item about which you wish to speak and present to the board clerk. If you would speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. And if you wish to speak under public comment, please note that on the speaker card. When the matter is announced, please approach the speaker's lectern in the back and be recognized by the chair. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Present.
Invocation will be by Jeff Polia, Worship Pastor for a Venice Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be directed by Zachary Hamill. Please stand.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much how you've blessed our Sutter County communities, and we thank you for those represented here who have chosen to say yes to the giving of their time and strength in order to contribute even more to that blessing that you've granted to us. Our to-do lists are long, and we come to you humbly, God. We ask for wisdom and insight and patience and so many things that sometimes don't come naturally to us, but they come in 100% with you all the time. So we lift this time up to you. Thank you for our representatives and thank you for the collection that are here with their concerns. We trust that you will be looking over this time. In your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Zachary? Moving on, presentations. We have four presentations.
Zach Hamel, please join the boards to receive a plaque in recognition of receiving the Gold Award from the California Emergency Services Association for your contributions to improving emergency management in California.
Emergency Manager Zachary Hamel gets a state recognition. Zachary Hamel received a Gold Award from the California Emergency Services Association for his contribution to improving emergency management in California. Having experienced the 2017 Sonoma County Fire firsthand, he served as a liaison to the town of Paradise for the Cal Fire Incident Command Team during the Camp Fire of 2018. He helped the devastating town establish an emergency operations center in Chico. Staff with mutual aid support allowed town staff the necessary time to regroup and recover and receive training to embrace the grim work ahead. He also recognized for his leadership within the California Emergency Services Association. Congratulations, Zach. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. So I, uh, I was honored that my peers in California emergency management recognized me, and I'm very honored that you, as the board, are recognizing me as well. The way I'm dressed, I'm actually coming directly from Butte County. I was up on the Parkinson's for the last 21 days helping Butte County again on another fire, so, thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Michael Johnson, please join the board to receive a proclamation recognizing August 2024 as National Dog Month in Sutter County.
This award is being given to me as the president of the Off the Leash Dog Park. However, Thomas Barnes is the one who is responsible for maintaining it, and, and he's the one that should be receiving that award along with my beautiful wife Donna, who does all the work. My job is to make sure they don't leave the board.
Dogs have been loyal companions for humans for centuries, providing love, support, and joy to catless individuals and families. Yubus Sutter Off the Leash Dog Park was conceived in 2005 in Sutter County to provide a safe, designated area for dogs to exercise and socialize. And the Yubus Sutter Off the Leash Dog Park encourages responsible dog owners by providing a controlled environment for dogs to interact with other pets and their owners, helping to build a sense of community along dog lovers. And Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim August 2024 National Dog Month in Sutter County, recognizing Yubus Sutter Off the Leash Dog Park and their volunteers. Donna, you want to say a few words?
Oh, sure. It's not that glamorous being on the board because we have to pick up a lot of stuff. But it's very rewarding to come and see all the dogs for all these years. Harry here is a product of the dog park. We've, uh, we've only adopted him three years ago. He's actually going to be 16 on September 1st, so happy early birthday, Harry. And the only reason we know Harry is, and he's a Tibetan terrier, if anyone was wondering, the only reason we know Harry is because we used to go to the dog park and, and knew him. So there's a huge community of, of dog owners that come and enjoy the park. They love being at the park and they, they, you know, we were able to adopt Harry because we knew Harry, and we also knew the family situation. We're able to take him in when his mom passed away. So, Tom, did you want to say anything?
So, another aspect of the park that is nice is the number of people who are dog owners who pitch in and help, come over with cleaning up tree limbs that fall and various other tasks. So I do have a lot of help, it's not just me.
2024 as National Breastfeeding Month in Sutter County.
I should live right in front here. There we go. Okay, everybody's up here, good. Breastfeeding helps prevent child malnutrition, ensures food security for infants and young children, decrease the risk of autism, diabetes, obesity, heart disease, and breast cancer. And Tri-County Breastfeeding Alliance, a cooperative, cooperative of local breastfeeding professionals and advocates, has succeeded in increasing the awareness of the importance of breast milk and breastfeeding. And in 2024, the themed National Breastfeeding Month is Nourish, Sustain, Thrive. This seeks to encourage all people, businesses, and groups in celebrating and support of breastfeeding as an instrument of lifelong health. Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim August 2024 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Sutter County, and the board shows their support and appreciation to those efforts.
Thank you for supporting National Breastfeeding Awareness Month, and with the help of many different public health programs, our home visiting staff and our WIC staff, along with many partners in the community, the region has been able to increase our breastfeeding rates in the last 10 years from 37% to 67%, which is amazing. And really, with the help of all the staff, so thank you.
Women Infant and Children WIC program was established 50 years ago to provide critical nutrition assistance, education, and support to low-income pregnant women and mothers, infants, and young children since 1974. And WIC program was candidly adopted to meet the involving needs of participants, including of fit, uh, offering breastfeeding, support, nutrition counseling, and referrals to essential services. And the success of the growth of the WIC program over the past five-year decades is testament to the enduring importance of investing in health and future of our nation's children. Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of August 2024 as WIC's 50th Anniversary Month of recognition by the remarkable achievements of the Women Infant and Children Program, letting celebrate the progress made, honor the dedicated individuals who have contributed to the success and renew of our commitment to ensuring that all families have access to resources they need to thrive.
I'm Carrie, the Director of the WIC program, and just thank you for supporting our awesome program. We have 11 wonderful staff who serve about 3,400 families in our community, and by using their WIC cards, they can purchase healthy foods, and they bring in about a quarter of a million dollars or more into our community. So thank you.
So I'd just like to say it's really rewarding and honoring that the WIC program. I've been involved with the Department of Agriculture, who I believe funds that, and the Department of Agriculture, about 82 cents of a dollar goes into food programs for feeding the hungry in the nation, and WIC is part of that program. And I always heard of WIC, but I didn't realize the Women Infant and Children what it stood for. So that's, I learn something new every day. So, um, but yeah, it's the Department of Agriculture, Calif, USDA, funds that program. And you got more information about that? No? Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay, any speaker cards on public comment?
Yes, we have six. The first speaker is Janet Johnson.
Reorganized State of California Ordinance 2401. The State of California Insurrection Against the United States Constitution. The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government which fails to provide a republican form of governance, enables and supports across its southern border the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals, and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of violence upon the citizens of America, all caused by a government of and for a monoparty system led by a tyrannical dictator who openly defies federal law. California's monoparty political machine, its socialist government, governor, along with communist state legislators, socialist elected officials, agencies, and unelected regional governance boards are colluding to create a communist California state in direct violation of both Article 4, Section 4, and Article 6 of the United States Constitution. The State of California is moving at breakneck speed toward the ultimate communist state. The California 1850 Compact Constitution was legislatively replaced in 1879 by a progressive constitution. After over 155 years of hard work to destroy all vestiges of the United States Constitution by using the 1879 Constitution, and through court decisions, over 920 amendments to the California Constitution, massive taxes strangulating regulations, regionalism, deliberate destruction of the United States, premier education, and economic systems, along with the raping of one of the planet's finest environmental zones. The stage is now being set for the final nails into California's totalitarian coffin. Since the mid-1990s, California has been a monoparty system. Over the years, the noose around the state's republican form of government has been tightened with bogus constitutional amendments that include redistricting, congressional and state seats, and resorting to a political party killing amendment, Proposition 14, that allows the two-top vote-getting candidates from the state primaries to move on to the general elections regardless of party affiliation. Worse yet, since the passage of the 2010 Proposition 14, criminal cartels have taken control of the porous southern border of California and have established operations to traffic human slaves and to distribute massive amounts of fentanyl that kills thousands of Americans each year. This operation run by the cartel network works in conjunction, in conjunction with government finance and non-governmental agencies, and have taken control of California's political machine.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Before I start, what I originally wanted to say and rail on you is please get rid of the machines for voting, if no other reason. Times are tough, $1.85 per paper ballot is a whole lot cheaper than 1950. That said, and I do want to mention something about Tina Peters, what a trial. She was not allowed to put on evidence, her, her witnesses were not allowed to speak. That's coming here where we don't have any rights. But anyway, getting back to why we are so adamant that our legislature, can I say sucks? Or has left us behind in the dust. They are giving us so many unconstitutional mandates, and you, the board, have fallen prey, well, not maybe all of you, the newly electeds who are not involved, falling into the prey to their mandates. That is unconstitutional, that is wrong, and it has led to some of the stuff going on. That said, I'll get back to business. In 2020, the California Attorney General's Office proposed an amendment to the California State Constitution to replace the bicameral assembly in Senate with a unicameral, nonpartisan legislature and to increase the number of members serving in the legislature. That was considered for the November ballot. If the uncameral, nonpartisan legislature proposition had passed, the loss of representative form of government in the formation of totalitarian state government would have been completed. Oh, and they're not quitting. The pattern and timing of these events are by design and will doom the state of California and the citizens of the United States who live within its border into tyranny, patterned after the communist China's Maoist takeover, China following World War II. Whereas California has a porous border with sections of inadequate fencing on the southern border, as well as access from the Pacific Ocean onto miles of unguarded beaches, it is known that thousands of unidentified foreign nationals referred to as "the gotaways" enter the state monthly violating federal immigration laws. And whereas the porous border of California allows untold numbers of the illegal foreign nationals to enter California trafficking humans for labor and sex trade with no plan to remedy to secure the border and violating Federal Law 22 USC Section 7102 in the California Penal Code, Section 236.1. That just means you can't do it. Whereas the porous border of California allows untold numbers of the illegal foreign nationals to enter California trafficking dangerous life-threatening drugs, including fentanyl, which is killing citizens with no plan to remedy and secure the border. And whereas the true purpose of all government is to promote the welfare and provide for the protection and security of the governed.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Tina Hessong.
May I just add that Janet's, one of Janet's grandsons, is one of the victims of the fentanyl overdose poisoning. Whereas the true purpose of all government is to promote the welfare and provide for the protection and security of the governed, and when any form of organization or government proves inadequate, inadequate for or subversive of its purpose, it is its right, it is the duty of the people to alter or abolish it. Whereas the Constitution's first three words, "We the people affirm that the government of the United States exists by the consent of the people to serve its citizens." The government of California, the current socialist governor and monoparty system, along with local officials, are following a coordinated design with the intent to actively engage in acts of insurrection against the United States Constitution. And whereas the existing state of California government, thus called, has not only abused the powers nominally entrusted to it, but with the conveyance and active aid of the executive, has usurped and exercised other powers to manifest injury of the people, which if permitted, will inevitably subject them to despotism and tyranny. Be it resolved, acting on behalf of all citizens of California, the reorganized state of California will establish a restored California government. The reorganized California government will consist of an executive branch, judicial branch, and a bicameral legislative branch of government. Be it further resolved, the reorganized state of California shall honor the Constitution of the United States of America as the supreme law of the land and shall honor Articles 4, 5, and 6 that embody the concepts of federalism, describe the rights and responsibility of state governments, and states in relationship to the federal government. Therefore, be it resolved, the reorganized state of California shall ensure law enforcement in force and that courts prosecute those engaged in modern-day slavery according to Federal Law 22 USC Section 102 and California Penal Code, Section 236.1. Thus protect the rights of the people under Article 5, Article 4, Section 4 of the United States Constitution that guarantees to every state in the Union a republican form of government and to protect each of them against invasion and on application of the legislature or the executive when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence in accordance with our compact secured by the California Statehood Act of September 9th, 1850.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just stop there for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Tony Farley.
Lot of talking. Day's a nice day. Zachary guy, he's helping Butte County, mutually aid Butte County, and also the sheriff of Butte County, Sheriff Cornhorny, also a lot of the grief guy, lawyer. Also mutually aid Chico Fire and Chico Police. Mutual aid is good. Psych, psych, psych the first bar version of NATO, psych the first bar California version of NATO, first bar NATO is mutually aid. One tack, one ally is tackle all. Well, one fire attack, one county against all California cities, like the first bar of NATO. I like that. Here, thanks to you for your service. Mike Ziegler, thanks for your service. Dan Flores, the, the Star Wars guy, Star Wars, Darth Vader guy. Matt Coden, thank you. Karen Baines, thank you for your service too, and also like, like your business style, the farming. Thank you, Bill, the attorney. Fletcher Steve Smith, I like Steve. The cowboy, the best sheriff of all, the cowboy sheriff, Ben Barnes, and our sheriff, Scott Smallwoods, and the Marine Corps guy, um, Marine Corps, Marine Corps guy, you know. Also Sergeant, Sergeant, Sergeant Zachary Briggs. Thank you, thank you, Sarah Everhart Rios. Thank you, helped me out with Section 8, I love that. Thank you, Sean Fabi. And thank you, Donna. Some of, some of my, some of, some, some, something in the future will be on the ballot someday, helping the ballots. And thank you, Dr. Liu. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Okay, consent calendar, the consent hour, group together, those items are...
Sorry, Chair, we, we have two more speakers.
Oh, two more, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
1,237 votes from the March 2024 primary Prop 1 election are still missing, and we the people continue to respectfully demand a hand recount to provide the transparency that is required in elections and put the issue to bed. Dominion CEO Polis has been quoted as, quoted as saying the questions, that questions with the integrity of software being manipulated can be solved by a hand count audit and recount. We the people have a legitimate question that can be resolved. Again, I respectfully request a hand recount of the Prop 1 votes. We the people are tired of being told that there is no election of fraud, move on, there's nothing here to see. As the presidential election approaches, things are heating up across the country. An assassination attempt has been made on a presidential candidate. In Georgia, a citizens group has declared a state of emergency for their election systems. Virginia has mandated paper ballots tracking and proof of residency, and the president of Smartmatic brags about integrity and transparency hours after he was arrested, indicted for fraud, and then doesn't even bother to deny the charges. We the people of the United States are rising up against tyranny that is being foisted upon us by a corrupt election system. We demand our constitutional rights and implore the government to follow the Constitution as the supreme law of the land. We want all of our rights accordingly, but especially our right to freedom of speech, to grieve, and to vote as directed by the Constitution. Numerous times, concrete evidence of examples of election fraud from across the nation has been presented in this room and to the people of this county. They deserve that, an opportunity to examine, oh, I'm sorry, I messed up. Okay. Well, what I'm doing is I'm requesting that we have a public hearing on election fraud, so the people of this county can have the opportunity to examine information and draw their own collusion before casting their vote in another fraudulent election. We the people of Sutter County are requesting this board hold that public hearing on election fraud for the voters of the county and to consider the information for yourselves. A formal request will be sent by email tomorrow. A quick response to our respectful requests would be greatly appreciated, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Stephanie Rusignol.
I thought we only allowed one speaker for...
Well, if I would have known, I would have had my three minutes for my personal stuff, I wouldn't have wasted it before and just read some more, but you get the gist of it. wouldn't have wasted it before and just read some more, but you get the gist of it. We have been left behind. Our Constitution has been flushed down the toilet. The mandates that are coming out are straight from tyrant's mouth. Read the book Hitler's Legacy. You'll see a lot, or Operation Paperclip. You can connect more dots. Simone Anderson on a call, I could not believe the connections that she had made. And rather than waste your time, I'll just, anyone who's interested, I'll tell you where to find it direct. For instance, CARB, everybody thinks that's great. Did you know that they are actually a Delaware corporation? They're ruining the trucking industry, they have ruined so many people. Once that came out, the first people to go on this carbon credit auction crap was a company that had been in here in Sacramento over 100 years, one that I still support to these days, Campbell Soup. And I like their prego and all the other sauces too. But why? Because somebody wants extra money? Or like the water, do you think all this water grab and just a few people having all this power is good? I don't think so. You guys acquiesce, "Oh, we got grant money, oh, we're going to get in trouble if we don't spend it following ICL regulations." Oh, wait a minute, those are just suggestions on how to turn us more into UN and keep us marching and following their things, telling us to use voting machines when that lady right there, Donna Johnson, she is our duly elected registrar of voters, or what do they call her, her county clerk? Okay. Instead of her doing what she swore to we the people to do, she listens to the dictators who have gotten rid of our bicameral system, who have gotten rid of everything. Why do you think Elon Musk, who happens, just happens to own SpaceX? Why did he say California, "I've had it"? And there was a secret meeting yesterday, which I won't tell you about. Why? Because of the rule that Nusseini got through with his lockstep so-called legislature that says it's okay to mutilate your kids, it's okay to give them puberty blockers, alter their personality and everything, oh, and never let the parents go, and punish the parents if they think their kids are their responsibility. I mean, come on! Well, anyway, I'm just flabbergasted. I swore an oath several years ago, I won't say how many because then you'll know I'm lying about my age, that I swore to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And tell me, how many people are our enemies within? This is ridiculous. I challenge the board to grow a pair. If you don't...
Thank you. Okay, moving on, that was the last speaker card, correct? Okay. We do...
Couple more times.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't think that was enough. Anyway, all right. Consent calendar groups, together those items of which are considered non-controversial or prior policy direction that had been given to the staff and that require only routine action by the board. The chair will be advised, the audience, that the matter may be adopted by one total motion, however, the board may, at its option or the request upon a member of the public, consider any matter separately. Are there any speaker cards under consent?
Move for approval of consent, items one through 18.
Second. Motion, and second, Karen?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Connet?
Aye. Okay, we are now going to the In-Home Support Services Authority. We're adjourning the Board of Supervisors and convening the In-Home Support Services Public Authority Governing Board. We're going to let the roll call stand. Public comment, members of the public be allowed to address the In-Home Support Services Public Authority, board members on items of interest to the public who are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action will be taken on any item not appearing on a budget Appearance item, John Perry.
Excuse me, Chair, we do have two speaker cards.
Oh, we do have two, okay.
The first speaker is Ramilia Eads.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Ramilia Eads, I'm an IHSS caregiver and a proud member of United Domestic Workers from Ubah City. Caregivers like me are the backbone of the care economic here in Sutter County. We know what our workers, we know what our work is worth, and that's why we always fight so hard for a good contract that provides us with good wages. This contract will give us to $1 over minimum wage by January 2026. Today, I want to thank this board for working with IHSS caregivers on coming to an agreement that helps to improve our quality of life so that we can continue to provide quality care for this county's most valuable people. Thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you all towards a better future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Vanessa Sillas.
Hello, my name is Vanessa, and I am actually a union representative for United Domestic Workers here for Sutter County, and I am also part of the bargaining team. We were bargaining and negotiating for almost about a year and a half, and I just want to thank the board for working with us, the union and the IHSS caregivers, on coming to an agreement that helps us improve the quality of life so that we can continue to provide quality care for this county's most vulnerable here. I just want to thank you guys, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you. We now have John Perry, consulting specialist for Human Resources.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the United Domestic Workers of America, AFSCME, Local 3930, AFLCIO, amending benefits for in-home support services providers for the period of January 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027.
Turn the mic on, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I'm here to go over some highlights of the MOU that we successfully negotiated with the union. I want to thank my team members, Tanya Beebe and Krista Flannery, and I'd like to thank the union for their support in the negotiations. We were able to, within the authority that was given to me, come to an agreement. The agreement is January 1, 2023 through June 30, 2027. Upon ratification, the home healthcare workers will be getting 65 cents over minimum wage. January 1, 2025, they'll get an additional, or they'll get about 85 cents per hour over minimum wage, and then in January 1, 2026, they'll get a dollar over minimum wage. And we, within the cost of the agreement, they were able to add a benefit of life insurance, and the fiscal impact of this will be approximately $150,102 over the course of the contract. And I have Sarah here, if we have any questions that either myself or Sarah or my team can answer.
Any questions for the board? The chair? Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a brief comment, I just want to say thank you for the negotiations and the good work on that, and thank you for the, working with the union and, you know, union folks for working with us for the negotiations. Appreciate it, and with that, go ahead.
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, and I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work through this, hammered out for a period of time, and you guys did a great job. Well, ditto, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Director Baines?
Aye.
Director Connet?
Aye. That concludes that item. We're adjourning the In-Home Support Services Public Authority Governing Board and reconvening the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to let the roll call stand. And the first item on the appearance is Brandon Barnes, Sheriff Coroner.
Presentation on the Sutter County Sheriff's Office 2023 Annual Report.
Thank you, Brandon. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, members of the board. I think we're getting set up here. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. This is the Sutter County Sheriff's Office Annual Report for the calendar year 2023. This report is designed to serve as a reminder of what was accomplished while also providing the foundation of what we hope to accomplish in our years to come. I'm honored to present this report to our Board of Supervisors, of course, to our community. This document will be posted on the Sheriff's Office webpage for our community to view, and certainly print out a copy if you like. Kind of want to start by acknowledging the men and the women of the Sheriff's Office for the work that they do. It's challenging at times, and I think we all know that. But I'd also like to thank our executive assistant, Jesslyn, and members of my command staff for the work that they did to bring this report together. They worked tirelessly for about the last six months to produce this document. I want to start off with the cover art here, you'll see a truck, which we've gone to some pickup trucks in our fleet, which was before the board to approve. And then also it represents another change, which is our new graphics, which display the buttes there. Those particular graphics were designed by Daisy Aguilar, who's one of our community service officers, a very talented person, both at painting and our graphic design, and she just does all kinds of things for us. So I wanted to acknowledge Daisy and tell her thank you for the work that she did. I'm going to try not to go through this thing page by page in the interest of time. All of the board members have a copy of it, and Steve Smith has a copy as well, and again, it is available online. So what we did was, for the first few pages, we like to highlight our employees, acknowledge retirements, and then take a look at some of our academy sponsorships. This was actually our health fair for the county, our table of contents, a review of our values, and our mission statement for the Sheriff's Office, a letter from me, and then an overview of our command staff. These are some of our employees of the year, which we highlighted. Some of you got a chance to attend the dinner that we did in honor of them, so thank you for that. Towards the bottom of that page, staff retirements. Generation Next, these are our academy sponsorships, where we've actually had a lot of success in terms of recruitment, of actually bringing people on and paying their way through the academy, letting them earn a paycheck while they go to school, and then they come out and they serve the community, and so that's been pretty successful for us. New hires, some promotions, some awards, a lot of statistical data that you can find within the report on all three of our divisions, including budget. So one of the things we chose to highlight this year, and is new to the report, is some information on media relations, also technology improvements for the Sheriff's Office. We also highlighted property management system, which includes more than 8,000 pieces of property that have to be managed, and sometimes that has to be purged, other times it has to be made available for court, so there's a lot that goes into that. So the report goes on to highlight some of the amazing staff that's working for our community and the work that they're doing throughout the Sheriff's Office. Our kitchen staff, our bailiffs, again, some grant work that we've been doing, community events like our basketball tournament that we did up in City of Live Oak, some of the presentations and other acknowledgements, including the board. I will say that I see Supervisor McKelley's not here, he did not make it into the report last year, so I promised him he would this year, and he's featured up there in the far left-hand corner. Our boat patrol, search and rescue. So this is one of the things I wanted to highlight for you, which is on page 16, it introduces three new canines to the Sheriff's Office and, along with their handlers. So in 2023, we added K-9 Bailey to our jail division, that was new. She does a lot of narcotic detection for us and helps with contraband, and that's been very successful. And then also Hitch and Cheeto, who replaced two retired canines that left the Sheriff Office, so you'll see them on the right-hand side there. Moving on to page 17, special recognitions. One of the things that I'm extremely proud of at the Sheriff's Office is how hard not only everybody works, but the amount of awards that we seem to bring into the county. And I think we see it, you know, much like the awards that were being presented today and in past board meetings, just a lot of phenomenal work being done throughout the county. And so some of the highlights, as many know, under Sheriff Smallwood was recognized by the California State Sheriff's Association as the second-in-command for the entire state of California for the year. Big shout-out to him. Detective Evans received a lifesaving award. Sergeant Aguilar was recognized by the Veterans of Foreign War for his investigative work for a case up in Live Oak. Deputy Lacon was recognized for his community outreach. Deputy Anub was recognized for his attention to those driving under the influence, and more recently, which isn't captured in this report, he was recognized by Mothers Against Drug Drivers for getting more than 100 DUI arrests during the course of a year, so pretty good recognition. Deputy Cash received a commander's accommodation, and then both Captain Nice longer and Lieutenant Garza were recognized for their years of service. Both of them will be retiring at the end of this calendar year, and so we'll miss them greatly, but we're preparing for their departure with some promotional opportunities, so that's always very exciting. From there, the report goes on to highlight some of the many community events like Shoot with the Sheriff, the Ubah Sutter Fair, our Citizens Academy, various parades that we participate in, and of course, National Night Out, which we just concluded. I'm going to jump down to page 25 real quick. So down at the bottom there, justice. We work in a field where justice is important, but you'll notice it's spelled "just us," right, as a community, so a little play on words there. But justice is our anti-bullying mascot, and certainly very popular, not only with the kids, we've done many presentations throughout the county, anti-bullying campaigns and rallies, and then justice is always a hit at various community events that we do, and so justice is featured down there. Justice, I believe, is also featured on the front cover, if you happen to look there. So with that, I mean, again, there's more slides that I could go through, but again, I hope you'll take the time to look at that online. Here's what I'll say. There's no secret that there are budget challenges, but hopefully through the report, you can see that we continue to be innovative, we continue to be dedicated to providing a quality of service that exceeds standards here for our community. Certainly want to acknowledge Steve Smith, our CEO, and his staff for their continued support of me, my office. I want to thank all of the other department heads that are here, I'll probably forget some, but we are the sum of our success and the work that we do together, and there's always a lot of great work that's occurring. Departments like Development Services, HHS, Human Resources, General Services, Probation, the DA's office, our county council, we're just truly blessed to have good partners in public safety and throughout the county, so thank you to all of you. As always, I want to thank the board for your continued support, and as noted, there's photos of the board members prominent throughout the report, but what I think that does is it validates how active you are in supporting public safety, so thank you to each of you for that. I want to thank community members for their constant support of us as well. We exist because of you, and we are here to serve you, and we never lose sight of that. Being the Sutter County Sheriff is something that I take a great deal of pride in personally, but I also recognize any success we have as a result of a lot of great work, as highlighted throughout this report. The credit belongs to the men and women of the Sutter County Sheriff's Office, and I want to thank them and acknowledge the work that they do. This will conclude my presentations, but certainly happy to answer any questions, and thank you to the board for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Is there any speaker cards? Nope. Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to make a comment. I don't know if this is the right time, but a great presentation, thanks for your annual report. So we've seen agricultural theft is on the rise. And not only with big equipment, tractors and trucks and that, but getting down to they're selling fertilizer tanks, injector pumps, they're still, you know, ripping copper out of, out of pumps, but even going in broad daylight and stealing commodities, so they're, you know, coming in van loads of people, stealing peaches, almonds and that. I would just like to make a request that if we get some more patrolling, that, and I know you made a comment about, you know, budget challenges and that, but for some of us, it's our livelihood, and I heard it loud and clear from neighbors in my district, folks that I represent.
Yeah, most definitely, and I'll just kind of expand on that a little bit. So, I mean, obviously, we have a community response team, they are out in the community working those specialized details. We do have a detective that is specifically assigned to agricultural theft. As many of you know, we're actively involved with the Farm Bureau, we use things like Smart Water and other detective tools, some camera systems that are out in the community. But more importantly, we're having conversations about the future, you know, looking at maybe getting out of some of those areas that were under the master tax exchange with Ubah City. There are five deputies that are providing services in the city. If we are able to move away from that and retain those positions, we can push them out into the rural areas of our county, get more support in there. So there are things in progress, and we're constantly looking to evolve in those areas.
Thank you. Yes. Mike, you had a...
I just want to thank you and your department for your, your community service and your outreach, it's pretty awesome. Everywhere you look, you're there, no matter which community, throughout Live Oak, Sutter, Ubah City.
Missed you at the water gunfight this year.
I know, and it's been, when you have four kids and you're all over the place, because, yeah, and the school year's just started yesterday for some...
And the school year's just started yesterday for some of those. So it's one of those things, all the sports. But you're going to see these sheriff deputies all over the place. They're always at the football games, basketball games, volleyball games, flag football games now. But, and we love to see you in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brandon. Excellent report.
Thank you, supervisor.
Okay. Moving on, Steve Smith.
Approval to appoint Veronica Baumgartner as Director of Human Resources at Step Two.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and supervisors. So it gives me great pleasure to make this recommendation to appoint Veronica Baumgartner as HR Director. Veronica's been with the county for over five years. She's filled multiple roles here, has great experience in our loss prevention and workers' compensation programs. She's been included in bargaining. She is currently interim HR Director, but was the Assistant Director of Human Resources. She has great private sector experience as well. And she's really stepped up and is very considerate when making recommendations, great at thinking things through on the impacts, and has proven to be very valuable in the interim role. Therefore, I'd like to make the formal recommendation that the board appoint Veronica. And I'm available for questions and Veronica's as well.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any speaker cards? Okay. Veronica.
I would just like to say thank you to the board for your consideration and your confidence in me. And I'd also like to thank the amazing HR team. Obviously, without them, I would not be here. And we have a really strong team with a lot of knowledge and years of service and a lot of innovation, too. So I think we can do really great things, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Any question from the board?
No questions. I just, um, I think you're the perfect person for the job. I think, you know, looking at all the applicants and so forth and working with Gina, it's tough. Gina, I thought, did a great job. It was, we were sad to see her retire. But when you come in, you know, working alongside her and, and I was very impressed. I've been very impressed over the last, especially the last, what, almost last year. You know, you've been right there. So great job, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Mike, carm? Second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Connet?
Aye.
You know, I'd like to say one other thing. This is a, another good day for Sutter County right here to attain someone, retain someone with your caliber and your quality of work ethic.
Okay, Steve, follow-up.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. We have our correspondence and our commissions and reports on the agenda. District reports. Who would like to go first? Mike?
First, I want to close in memory of Robert Matthews, who passed away a couple of weeks ago, pretty sudden. Inventor of the Roboduck, you know, you know, farmer in Uba County. Went to a lot of dinners here in Sutter County, supported a lot of good causes. And then another Randall Lee Anderson, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. And then I'd like to, we have high school sports starting. A new sport for this area is girls' flag football. And it's really cool. Brand new sport, really awesome. So I encourage all the ladies out there to try it out if your school has it. We have it at Sutter High School, and there's a lot of scholarships out there for this. All right? So it's huge. So we got, I don't believe the actual football season starts for football until next week. I believe all the schools, East Nicholas, Sutter, Marysville, everyone starts off next week. But I know girls' volleyball starts off this weekend. The tournament started out for high school. So I'm looking forward to that. And I want to talk about, you know, I'm part of Area for Aging. Now, that's one of the committees I inherited. And last, last Friday, we had a meeting, and we were talking about the new budget and the shortcomings of what some of those funds look like. And I'd like to do a little more research, Steve, to pen a letter up from the supervisors to talk about the possible $160,000 we might be shorted if we don't receive the votes in that committee. All right, there's a committee that votes on this. And, because that's going to affect food delivery to a lot of elderly in our area here in Sutter County. So it's a really, really sad deal because we don't know how bad this thing's going to get. And, you know, I talked about in the originally, in the first part of the meeting is, hey, you know, we know we have our budget, but I think this thing's going to get worse in the next few months. So we're that, and they're like, well, we're looking at, government is looking at cutting where we're at. So we really need to look in this and put some sort of letter together saying, hey, you can't, we got to protect our elderly in our communities, those, especially those that receive food, you know, not, you know, breakfast, lunch, dinner, because that's the only meal. Sometimes they're only getting one or two meals a day, and that's it. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Mike. Dan?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Carm?
I'd like to be added to the letter of sympathy and condolences that's been sent out to the families of Robert Matthews. And also we get a letter sent to the families of Kelly Bumpus.
Through the chair, I'd like to be on that. Robert, Kelly was an amazing guy.
As well.
Put me on there, too. Okay. But I didn't, okay, I didn't even realize that. Okay. I have three tonight, this evening, afternoon. I'd like to close the memory of Billy Single, born June 17, 1927. Passed away on her wedding anniversary on July 26, 2024. Billy was a realtor for over 40 years and a group leader who helped start the Bokai Parade in Marysville. He's a gold shalt leader. She really missed, and I farmed land for her. She's a wonderful person. Real loss for the community. Quite a, quite an interesting lady and very good family. Next, I'd like to close the memory of Norman James. Norman was born May 27, 1932, resident Pleasant Grove for the last 92 years. He passed away on June 18, 2024. Norman was beloved husband and dad and friend and grandfather to most important of his family foundation. I would like to, the letter sent to his family. And Norman was very instrumental in, in his wife and starting the Pleasant Grove Fire Department down there in the early 60s and late 70s. Great guy, and so was his wife. They got a lot done for that community. And last, I'd like to close the memory of Oscar George Deesner Jr. He's a Oscar George Deesner Jr., 90, of Wheatland. Passed away on July 12, 2024. And I'd like to let her send to his family. He's retired Air Force and great guy. My dad passed away like 35 years ago. And when that happened, he came out to me and helped me for a year, a couple of years, help with the farming operation because I lost my father. I was only 29, and I really appreciated that help. Anyway, I'd like, for those three considerations, would you like a motion?
Through the chair.
Okay.
Sorry, I almost forgot. The Uba Sutter Stand Down starts this week. That's Thursday and Friday. They're looking for volunteers starting at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. So if you'd like to show up to help arrange clothes and so forth. But that's Thursday and Friday here at the, at the Uba Sutter Fairgrounds. And this is for all the veterans here in the Uba Sutter area. Helps them out with all kinds of stuff from, not only from health, dental, vision, place to stay and so forth. Really neat. I also wanted to have a couple of plaques made up for Jim Behringer, longtime Sutter Lions Club member. And, you know, served as president for many years. And Branch Ricky, who just served his last couple of years at Sutter Lions Club and just did Dancing with the Stars. They just had Dancing with the Stars this past weekend. Pretty neat, all that, where the money's gone through. So with that.
Okay. Through the chair. Go ahead.
Move approval?
Second. Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Connet?
Aye.
Now we'll go into closed session. Thank you for coming.
Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Case Name Hunt Jr. v. County of Sutter. Case Sutter County Superior Court, Case Number CVCS20-0000839, Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1.
Very blessed man. He taught you as a principal at Notre Dame School.
Oh, yes. Yes, that's right. I forgot about that.